Out that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card. And if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority to speak for said such organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Once the item is called, no more public comment cards will be accepted. I believe the public comment cards are usually on the table over there and back there and bring them to our city clerk or Tammy. So with that, I will ask the city clerk to call the first agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is discussion of naming green space properties. Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Mayor and the city council members, I am Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director. And today I am here to start the discussion on a very interesting and a very important topic, that is the naming of the green space properties. I want to thank the Green Space Advisory Committee members and the president of the Milton Historical Society, Jeff DeFrain, for working with us on this project. As we all know, in 2016, more than 82% of the Milton voters approved $25 million in green space bond to acquire land for parks, trails, and green space, including land for conservation and for natural areas. And since last more than two years now, the Green Space Advisory Committee members have been working very hard to identify the properties and to recommend them to the city council. So when the staff started talking about the naming of these properties, it was very obvious that we go in front of the Green Space Advisory Committee to get their recommendations on the naming of these properties. And today, I am basically presenting the recommendations of the Green Space Advisory So first, starting with a brief background. This map basically shows the status of the current green space acquisitions. In the last almost three years now, the city has acquired more than eight green space properties. That will conserve more than 400 acres of land for the Milton residents to enjoy at a cost of more than $20 million. And this is the map that basically shows all these eight green space properties. Out of these eight properties, few of them are adjacent to each other, like this former Milton Country Club property is adjacent to the property on Freemanville Road. And the same way, this property, which is at the southeast corner of Bethany Road and Providence Road, is adjacent to the property which is at the Providence Road. So maybe if the city council wants, whatever the name you choose for the Milton Country Club can also be extended to the property which is on Freemanville Road. That's the reason why we are saying eight unique purchases, total of six total green space areas, because two of them are contiguous to each other. So we had this discussion in our Green Space Advisory Committee. We also had some discussion in our Trails Advisory Committee. And there was a general consensus that these green space properties should be called as the preserves, to basically distinguish them from other city parks and also to talk about the conservation and the environmental aspects of these properties. So whatever the name the city council chooses, it was recommendation that we should be calling them as preserves. So this is the recommendations of the names. So as per the recommendation of the Green Space Advisory Committee, the committee is recommending that the former Milton Country Club, the passive part of the former Milton Country Club, should be named as the Chicken Creek Preserve, basically because of the 1.6 miles of Chicken Creek that is located on the property. From the historical perspective also, the creek itself is named after a Native American family who resided in the Little River area. According to the Milton Historical Society, a Cherokee family named Chicken resided at the Little River town. So in recommending this name, the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee felt it was fulfilling the environmental mandate of the green space bond, as well as honoring areas important but often overlooked Native American history. Coming to the second recommendation of the Lackey Road property, the committee is recommending that this property should be called as Lockapani Preserve. The Lackey Road green space is home to many springs, creeks, and a lake. The former owners, the Wolf family, began calling the property Lockapani almost 60 years ago. The word Lockapani translates to many waters in Hindi, and the name was first suggested to the Wolf family by a visitor from India. The committee liked the fact that the name Lockapani refers to the water features that are located on this green space property. The third recommendation is of the property which is at the Birmingham Road and the Freemanville Road. And the committee is recommending that the area, that the area that this property should be called as the Free Soil Preserve, named after the community named and also after the early post office that was located in this area called the Free Soil Post Office. Coming to the fourth recommendation of the property which is located at the Bethany Road. One second. I will lose my table. Hold on one second. Now coming to the property which is located at Birmingham Road and Freemanville Road. I have to say this, okay? The property which is located at the Bethany Road and Providence Road should be called the Cooper Sandy Creek Preserve. After the Cooper Sandy Creek that is located on this property, there was some debate whether this creek is called the Cooper Sandy or the Copper Sandy. But the locals generally call this to be a Cooper Sandy Creek, so that's the reason why the committee is recommending that this preserve should be called the Cooper Sandy Lake Preserve. And the last name is the Hamby Road. It should be called as the Hamby Road Preserve, named after the location that's on the Hamby There was also some discussion at the Green Space Advisory Committee that one of these properties should be named as something like the Unity Park, Unity Preserve, or the Harmony Preserve. Because as we know, the Milton already has a Freedom, has a Friendship Park, so maybe because of all the things which are going on in the world, in the country, maybe one of the properties can also be called as the Unity Preserve. I'm trying to move this. Again, this is the map that basically shows the new names and the location of the properties which are on this map. Again, the former Milton Country Club should be called as the Chicken Creek Preserve, Top Soil Preserve, Lockapani Preserve, Cooper Sandy, and the Post Office Preserve. Then we have some pictures of Chicken Creek Preserve, Lockapani Preserve that basically shows the lake on the property. Free Soil Preserve talks about the agricultural nature of this property. Cooper Sandy Preserve, it's a picture of the Cooper Sandy which is located on this property. And the Hamby Road Preserve. That's pretty much for me. Any questions?
I have a question. Was it just one name that they've come up as, or did they have other choices too?
So there was a lot of discussion, but they basically came up with one name. I have one Green Space Advisory Committee member also, if you want to add something. Yes, so there was a lot of discussion in at least couple of meetings, at least three meetings. There was also a presentation from Jeff DeFrain, but they basically recommended these names.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Joe?
Parag, are we getting some reimbursement money or something from the post office? We got two post office references in this list of five names.
No, we are. Again, the names are basically-
Have we thought about that? They might be willing to chip in some-
It could be. That's a good point. But the names are basically from the historical perspective and from the environmental perspective.
Okay.
People were talking about there are seven Green Space Advisory Committee members, and all, each of these committee members could have picked one property to name the property after their name. But no, again, it wasn't-
Rick?
Could you tell me again, the Webb Road, how did you come up with post office preserve?
So there was a post office located in the general area of this property. Not on the property, but the first post office of the area was located in the general area.
Do you know what the post office was called, what the name of the post office was?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if we can be a little bit more creative than just post office.
Free soil. Hold on one second. The property, hold on one second. It's my last. Stacy, could you help me on this?
You're forward.
Here you are. Here you are. So this is basically the, the name was Joel Webb, and this post office, the name of the road is on the Joel Webb. One second. And it was in the general area, the post office was in the general area, so that's the reason why it was called as the post office.
And you said it was Webb Post Office?
Webb Post Office. But you are right, there are two post offices.
You know, I, in all due respect to, I certainly know how tough it is with committees and, you know, trying to name something and everybody's opinion, and sometimes you narrow it down and then it's like, well, wait, why didn't you pick that versus without having the, all the, knowing the discussion and everything else? So I'm not saying any of these are bad names, but I just, my concern is, if you get to something that you have to explain it, or that the average person is going to see, you know, we've got Friendship Park, Freedom Park, those are pretty easy. Hamby Road Preserve, that pretty much makes sense. You know, when you get to free soil, the average person isn't really going to know what that means unless you sit down and explain it. I think the same thing, that would be my concern with post offices, you know, it wouldn't be very simple in just a few words to explain to somebody why that is. You know, and the other one, the Chicken Creek, I totally understand that because of Chicken Creek and all the history there, but I don't know if, you know, the former Milton Country Club, if that's, if we want to tie it to Chicken Creek, if that makes sense. And I have chickens, so I'm not knocking chickens, but those are just my, my thoughts for discussion, so certainly. If anybody else has any.
No. The first thing I thought of when I heard Chicken Creek, I mean, I do know the tie to Chicken Creek. Whether or not that's the right tie, I don't know, but unfortunately, the thing that popped into my head was the Thomas Byrd Senior Facility House thing that we have going on. And we knew at the time we named it the Thomas Byrd House, everybody was just going to shorten it to the Byrd House, which is, of course, what they did. And so I'm just thinking, it'll be the Chicken Preserve before we know it.
Now, if I go back on, the mayor said, I mean, Cooper Sandy, like it, good. The Hamby Road Preserve, like it, good. Maybe the post office, we change to the Webb Road Preserve, or the Webb Preserve or something. I mean, so, but I think, I think it's a good starting, I think we're at a good starting point, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Or, I mean, I'm just making an example, it may not work, but, you know, if there wasn't a old post office on it, it could be the old Webb Post Office Preserve or something like that, that somebody reading it could, wouldn't have to have an explanation, but. Paul, do you-
Yeah, I have just a couple of comments, Joe. Thanks. I'm on the same page you guys are with some of the questions that have been posed. I think Webb, the Webb Road, one in particular, post office road does, or post office preserve does not. Make my heart pitter pat on that one. I think Cooper Sandy makes a lot of sense. I really appreciate the fact that Lockapani has been recognized, that because of the Wolf family heritage there, I know that will be very meaningful to the Wolf family. The Free Soil makes me scratch my head a little bit. Hamby Road makes sense to me. The Chicken Creek, Joe, to your point. I'm enamored with Milton Central Park because of what it is. It's central, and it is going to be a combination of things there. That would be my suggestion for consideration there. I think that's my two cents for now.
Can I give one cent?
Yep, absolutely.
One cent. So I just think that if I were a resident of the former Milton Country Club, that I might not want to always say Chicken Creek. I mean, I just don't see that. I don't think that's particularly workable or clever. But when you just said Central Park, you know, let's meet at Central Park, that has a little bit of, that is not urban to me. That just has a little bit of cachet for Milton that I kind of like. And I had not heard anybody say that, but I thought that was, I mean, it's in the center, and it's kind of fun. And it is a focal point of everything we're trying to do where I think people will really be more so than any of the other properties. I like that. One cent.
Sure.
Maybe the only one that had Milton in the name of it as well.
Yeah.
Just food for thought. So what's the process from here, Joe? I mean, we've had this discussion, or Parag, what happened?
Well, let me think. The last time I named a bunch of properties, preserved and green space, we did, that no. Well, I guess staff, Parag, and everybody's looking for direction, kind of a, yeah, we like it, no, we don't. Is this something that the council ultimately just comes up with the name, or is it something to send back to the committee and say, we like three of these, but tweak a couple? What's your thoughts on that?
Sure. As I mentioned, this was simply a start of the discussion, right? It was a start of the discussion, and we got some very good feedback. Staff was also on the same page, what city council members were saying. So let us, let us, give us some more thought. We got the feedback which, from you, let's have a discussion and our staff also, and then we can always get back with you to have some more recommendations.
Okay, yeah, maybe they can look at some of the other names.
Yeah, some other names. We can, again, we can discuss it with some other Historical Society members, or we can just have some more discussion within the staff and come up with some more suggestions.
And I'll go ahead and step out and say, I would think it would be fine if individual city council members have some suggestions, if they want to send to you guys for the group to look at or think about. No, well, I say that, I want to be careful with that. I don't want the, you know, I don't want people to think that the council's pushing, you know, a specific name, but it may be something just for discussion that makes sense, so.
At the end of the day, you're going to be the ones that decide the names. So if you have any input, please forward that over to Parag. We'll get that back out to the committees, and we'll get some more names back before you. It sounds if I, we changed the screen. It sounds like you're comfortable with Hamby, Cooper Sandy, Lockapani, and that's it. Right, you're, it sounds like you've got a basic comfort level with those. We'll spend more of our efforts on the others.
Yeah, and any reference to Milton, I think is good, you know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, just to kind of, I really appreciate the work that the Historical Society did, as well as Milton Green Space Committee. Clearly, they put some effort into this and did some research. So not to diminish, not to diminish their input, I really appreciate the work that they did and gave us a good starting point. Thanks.
And I hope I was clear on that when I first made my first statement, that certainly is, all due respect, I know that put a lot of work in and has some good work, so, yeah, it's all a work in process. We're all a team trying to figure it out, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on that?
We do not.
Okay. All right. Tammy, if you would please sound the next agenda item number two.
The second item is discussion of a use permit for farm wineries to sell beer and liquor. Ms. Sarah Ladart. Who we probably asking after you speak.
You already have the order of the agenda. Good evening, Mayor and Council. After our last council discussion, I worked with Robyn McDonald, and we are coming back in front of council to ask you to review and provide feedback on some proposed parameters around a special use permit to allow farm wineries to obtain additional beer and liquor consumption on premises licenses. We designed these general parameters to help our current farm winery, to ensure the right structure is in place for future farm wineries, and to take into consideration the potential impact on the surrounding neighbors and community. We have two clear objectives in creating the special use permit. The first is to keep Milton farms and to preserve AG1 land by creating revenue streams for them, and two is to protect the neighbors. So in looking at some general parameters around which we would like the special use permit to be centered on, keeping in mind that the numbers that we are presenting are arbitrary and are all up for discussion, the six are listed here, and I do have Robyn McDonald here, if you have any specific questions about the use permit process. But the first requirement is just that it's in AG1, that's the first thing that's listed as the required district. The second standard, or the first standard would be some number of contiguous acres dedicated to production of produce for the farm winery. Secondly, a maximum percentage of gross revenues coming from the sale of beer and liquor. Third would be a limitation on the times of day in which beer and liquor can be sold. Fourth is the, you know, being 100 feet away from other things. And then fifth being food service must be provided, not to confuse with making it mandatory that they have a full kitchen. And then lastly, that they actually have to go and get those related licenses for which they are applying the additional consumption on premises for liquor or beer. So with that, we're just looking for direction before we take this on to CZIM and Planning Commission, and then back to council.
Question, do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, if you guys are okay, probably hear the public comment, and then we can have questions from that.
Our public comment will be with Ms. Pamela Jackson.
Don't be asking to take Robert Hum with you. Doesn't do that at Hum.
Well, I'm back and still as confused as I've ever been, but I guess I'm glad that you spoke first.
Ms. Jackson, do you mind just saying your name and address for the record?
Pamela Jackson, 2105 Bethany Way. Thank you, sorry. But in seeing this, I don't know if this is just something, a place to start, but a minimum of 20 contiguous acres dedicated to the produ- Do you know how much that is? A lot of wineries only do one acre of vineyards, so, and we're going to have three acres of vineyards, but to do 20 contiguous, well, that just put me out of business, because I can't do that. I mean, I can't afford to do that either. So I guess that was the concern. And the other concern, and I do understand, or I guess I don't understand, the food services, and what does that mean, food services? Because I don't want to be a restaurant. And I don't think you all want me to be a restaurant, so I'm not really sure I understand what the food services are. So in other words, I'm standing here saying I'm confused again, but I think you all know what I need and what is important, but the way that's reading right there, that's too stringent that it would never happen. But the way that's reading right there, that's too stringent that it would never happen. So that's, I guess that's it. And also, wait, one more thing that with the tat, I'm trying to figure it out also because if it had all been under the farm winery thing originally, and I understand this is a special use, well, that's just more money and more money. So just curious about how that will pan out. And so just wanted to bring that up.
Okay.
Was that, did you make any sense of that? Thank you.
Clear as mud. Thank you. No, I'm kidding. No, good, good, good points and questions. Sarah, or yeah, Sarah wants to, although after Robert gets through. And again, he doesn't do that at home.
I could probably start jumping in while we're waiting. Robert, thank you again. I appreciate that. You're well dressed to be doing that. The, I, I don't believe that 20 contiguous acres were meant for vineyards alone. I believe that was, was meant for the size of the parcel of the property. I understand it reads the way that Ms. Jackson just said, but I don't believe that that was necessarily the intent.
I would agree. I, I know, and sometimes I'm just comparing to, I've been to some of the other wineries in Georgia, and while they may be a large piece parcel, the actual vineyards are usually a much smaller part. And then you've got buildings and green space here and whatnot. So that was my understanding. As we discussed before, we wanted it to be a large enough parcel of property so that, you know, it wouldn't affect a bunch of neighbors if, you know, if it were, if it were only a one acre minimum or whatever, you know, and somebody'd start trying to do one of the subdivision. But we wanted to have a large piece, larger piece of property to do that, but it didn't, it wasn't supposed to, or the intent wasn't that that had to be all for, you know, producing the grapes and vineyards and blah, blah, blah. Is that, do council?
Yeah, but why 20? I mean, what if, what if we have a candidate that's 10 acres?
Right, that was, that's, the numbers are arbitrary, so that was what I was, we were hoping to get from council tonight was, what number is that? Do you want liquor to be available on a two acre parcel, a 10 acre parcel?
I think contiguous acres, and then it can be interpreted as we go forward as to whether it fits in the spot and whether it has all the amenities that the mayor just mentioned. But 20 would be just, and I'm happy to, because I'm supportive of Ms. Jackson, but I just, that just is then targeted legislation. I don't think we want to do that.
Okay.
We, we actually debated this at length. Obviously, you have, you have different topography on different lots. You may have a lot that is 10 acres with a large berm that separates it from any other, any other uses. And you're never going to see anything or maybe even hear anything going on at the, at the adjacent property. So 20 acres is, is really somewhat subjective. We really just came up with that number because we're relatively sure on 20 acres, if you center it correctly, you're not going to bother anyone, but it doesn't have to be 20 acres by any means.
Does it have to be delineate a number, a number of acres?
I don't think it does.
Robin?
Except for the farm winery piece.
I'm, yeah, I'm just asking.
I mean, these prospective standards are just that, although typically, I just showed Sarah what a typical use permit would have contained in it, and many times it'll have a minimum or maximum acreage. So, and I think what the intent was to help preserve, you know.
Large lots.
So I think that's where that larger number came from. But, you know, it's pretty typical to have some minimum acreage in a use permit standard, so.
You use five acres a lot, correct, in our minimums?
Yes, correct, yeah.
I was almost, you know, there might be a boutique five acres that might work. There might not, you know, might be one that's 50 acres, but.
The beauty of a use permit is going to allow the council to evaluate each application that comes before you based on the merits and of the location itself.
And it could, you know, we have more of our recent use permit that we created was the special senior one that we have in AG1, and it's very site specific. We don't have a minimum acreage and it's talked about to be evaluated on each, like what the city manager stated, on each individual circumstance. So if you wanted Sarah to gear it that way, I could give her some verbiage to look at it that way as well, so.
Okay, I think Carol had a question.
Can I skip down to number two?
Does anybody have anything on the land at first, and then I'll just hold that spot. Paul and then Peyton?
I would just ask that we think about the role that active production would, or active farming of it come into play? I don't know if there's a state definition that describes how much of it, we're just saying for the production of wine, but if I'm producing this year and I decide that, gee, my business is thriving more so on what we called foreign wines and my, my individual production isn't worth the effort right now, do they lose their farm winery designation if they're not actively producing and growing on site? I think we need to consider, there needs to be some active, ongoing agrarian consideration for it to be considered a farm winery. Otherwise, you're just a drinking establishment.
Package store.
Yeah, package store, or package store or drinking establishment.
They'll lose their state certification. I'm looking over to Pam. They, they get checked every 30 days and then once a year because they have X percent has, after, after X amount of time, X percent has to be coming from something homegrown, correct? And, and that's how they maintain that, that, that state certification.
Between a winery and a farm winery, a big difference between that. I am a farm winery, which means I have to have the vineyards there.
Right, but this are.
So you're saying that part of this should, one of the standards should be that they have an active Georgia farm winery license?
If that's, if that's what that means. I realize that's a, you're offering a suggestion to answer my question, but if that's appropriate, yeah. I would, I would offer that as the answer. But I would just ask that you consider that so that we don't lose the component that is the active agrarian act of raising and producing the.
So I think in other use permits, we have all applicable state, local, you know, maybe looking at it on a broader, instead of calling, because the state might rename it something else and then we'd have to change it.
Yeah, I just hate to see somebody take advantage of it where you've got a, you know, one active vine and it's producing a half a bottle of wine and you get some consideration for that classification of, of winery. And we've, we fooled ourselves as to what the end result might be.
Makes sense. Peyton?
Hey, real quick, I mean, I don't have an issue with it being 10 acres. I think that's perfectly fine. I mean, I think that's fine. But I would highly recommend changing the verbiage, though.
Yeah, I'd mark that out.
Okay.
Yep.
And I was, you know, going to say, you know, maybe 10 acres. Let me ask a question, Ken. Even if it's 10 acres, if a special situation comes up, somebody applies that has seven and a half acres, but it's totally isolated or it works really good, you know, can that be addressed? Or, you know, or there may be a case where it really needs to be 15 acres or something. Do we have that flexibility, the council moving forward?
You do, particularly when you're drafting code. I mean, you could put that allowance into the actual use permit language itself or we could.
But what I'm saying, I'll use 10, for example. If we change the number to 10 acres now, but in the future, three years from now, five years from now, an advocate comes forward with a property that's seven and a half acres, but it really makes sense and it's protected and blah, 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 would the council have the ability to tweak that or they have to change the ordinance first?
Well, that's what I was saying. Since we're drafting code, you could actually add some language into the code that would give the council that flexibility with some sort of perhaps extraordinary showing or some sort of an extra showing. So yes.
So maybe we, we pick a number, let's say it's 10, but also some language in there, but based on individual, whatever that the count, you know, could consider different or whatever. I don't know if that.
Yeah, I, I think the right approach is to provide a minimum. So if we set a minimum of five acres, that covers anything. I mean, that would be the absolute lowest level that we would allow it. We still have to approve it in general, so that just, you know, sets the bar. Okay, if you have at least five acres, you can come forth.
And I actually, I do like that because that sets the bar to where it's not going to be going into its neighborhood. But it's, you know, but there is a case there's something, but as long as it does come before.
Well, it doesn't mean five acres gets you what you want either.
Exactly. It's just to apply.
Right.
So, okay, anybody, Rick, sorry.
And then as far as the minimum active acres, as far as the, the actual wine or the grown vineyards, I think, do you need to have something in there about that?
So I think what Ms. Jackson is saying is that it's a relatively small portion of the property that's active vines, right? So to put something in there would, could potentially just knock people out if they didn't, because that's not a large part of it.
It's, it's going to be covered under state regulations.
It is.
For it to be able to remain a farm winery, and I don't remember the farm, our farm winery language off the top of my head, but to remain a farm winery, I believe they have, they have to meet all of the state regulations already. I don't think that they have a, I don't think that they have a minimum acreage or percentage of land that the, that the, that you have for the vineyards. But you do have to produce X percent, and I'm going to use the wrong words, X percent of something out of the, out of your produce there.
20% of what I'm going to estimate.
Okay, so we could just eliminate the.
That, those, that verbiage, yes.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Carol, I think you have a question.
Can I skip down to number two?
Yep.
The maximum of 10%. The 10%, is that a guesstimate? Is there, is there history somewhere with that?
So I did a little research. I called over to Delonaga, Lumpkin County. I talked to both Frog Town and Monteluche. They both have full kitchens and they estimated that maybe 5 to 10% of their sales were from beer and liquor. And then in Habersham Winery in White County, they only sell beer, they're only allowed to sell beer without a full kitchen, and they estimate that it's maybe 5% of their alcohol sales. So we thought 10, I, I thought 10 was generous and also in line with what other wineries in Georgia were selling that at.
Well, I would, I would advocate for a little bit wider margin there because this is a nascent business. She's trying to grow and establish a new business and we don't quite yet know the mix. And arguably, anybody who really wants beer and liquor would go to a bar if that was your focus. If you want the farm winery experience, you're going to go to a farm winery. So the focal point will be wine, but that could arguably be a trap at the beginning, I think. So I'm in favor of a higher limit. I'm not really, I'm not worried about that limit. I'm not worried about the mix. I think the customers will sort that out. So, look, I'm fine with 25%.
And you know, I actually tend to agree on that in this scenario because I feel like if somebody's going to go to North Georgia to one of the wineries and, you know, do a wine tour or whatever, they're going to probably be more a wine connoisseur. In Milton, you've got a much bigger population where you might have a group of four people and three of them like wine and want to go do it, but the other person's not, so they don't go to it. But if, you know, one or two of the, out of the group want to have a beer or a liquor drink, you know, I think we should give a little more flexibility. Also too, since we're not required to have a full kitchen, the food sales are going to probably be less, so that's going to hamper it too. So I would be in favor of bumping that number up just because of those reasons. But certainly want to hear what other folks think. Joe?
I know the idea behind putting limits here, but because we want to make sure that the farm winery is doing the business of selling wine, either it's, it's wine, the state's wine, or some kind of wine. But are we creating some headaches for us by even contemplating what is the right mix? I'm serious, because how, how are we going to enforce that? Would they renew their business license every year? We're going to ask them for their receipts for the year or their balance statement or something and say, oh, look, you got 15% of your revenue came from something other than wine. I'm sorry, you lose your license. Is that what we're suggesting we're going to do?
No. They're, in general, with other alcohol licenses that we've passed, we, we tend to put a safe, a catch safe in there. So in the event that things are happening that are beyond what we want, we can go and we have the right to request the books to see that.
I wasn't trying to stump people, tough question or anything.
Bernadette can probably add a little bit to that.
Right, no, but my point was going to be this. We're walking into territory that we don't really know what's going to work, what's not going to work. We're trying, the reason we're having this conversation at all is because we're trying to be flexible enough to give a new business an opportunity to see if they can succeed. So I don't want to be ambiguous in any way, but at the same time, Ken, do we create problems for ourselves if we don't put in specific limits, go down the road a little ways, find out people are abusing the privilege that we've given them? Can we pull back on it at that time?
Can.
Yeah. That'd be what I see.
And I would agree with that. I think, you know, again, we're trying to micromanage on a small level. But yeah, if, if we found that, let's just say we put 25% or 40% or whatever to have a cap and then, but then we found out, you know, a lot of complaints and people just ended up going there, buy beer and liquor and no wine, and it just became a, a beer hall. You know, then we could go back as Joe and Ken were talking about. We could, click down on it. Paul?
A question for Sarah. So where does this part reside? Does this reside in our definition of a farm winery or does this part reside in the special use permit?
Chapter 64, zoning.
So it goes into zoning?
Yes.
So the farm winery does not contemplate the percentages of alcohol at all? Okay, so in a special use permit, you almost then could regulate it on a one-off basis if you recognize that this particular property in this particular location's going to have this set of criteria or this set of marketing anomalies to make it attractive. It, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a set standard. It could be on a sliding scale based on some of, some set of parameters that we would agree on because it's going to fall in a special use permit.
What Robin was saying at the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are, you know, like I mentioned before, the alternative housing is very much set up that way, senior alternative housing, where it's kind of, the planning commission makes recommendations, city council approves whatever those recommendations of the parameters for that specific property. Because it could be a one acre piece of property or it could be a 10 acre piece of property and therefore that's how it was set up. So also, you know, if you, if, if, if it ends up being more, wanting to be more flexible, maybe that's the way to go because I would say typically under standards, you can't ask for concurrent variance, but I think it would be hard to explain with the four considerations because they're so very physically thought through, like a setback, not a percentage of a, you know, alcohol or beer or wine being sold or beer. So I don't know. That's a suggestion. We can, I can show her kind of that layout of being, let's just look at each property individually unless there is, you know, I'm not as familiar with the alcohol side licensing, if there's something that is minimum that has to happen or maximum. But that's how the other more recent use permit was set up to be individually customized to each piece of property.
Well, I'll tell you, one of the reasons I'm asking is I've been following some of the articles that have been written about this particular application in our, in our own public organ. And Ms. Jackson's been pretty forward about the fact that the wine is her primary focus. She's even said in the article, I can't quote it, but it's something that where the alcohol, the hard liquor part is inconsequential to her, even not even necessary. So if we're debating alcohol percentages, it's not even something that's important to her, why are we making a liquor message or a liquor, a liquor measure if that's not even important to her? Beer and wine, beer and wine sounds like they're important, but not, but not the liquor.
So the state allows liquor. So in thinking about the second, fifth and 12th farm winery, one of those may want liquor. So that's just why it's beer and liquor in consideration.
Okay. But we haven't historically allowed bars.
Right.
And so I would pose the caution on the liquor part.
Anybody else? Rick, sorry.
I guess to Paul's point, one of the things early on, originally we were saying you could only sell wine that was produced. And then we said, well, that's going to be a while before those grapes are ready and whatever. So we opened it up so that under the farm winery, you could also sell other wines that may not be produced directly in Georgia. I think we did that. So again, we kept with. So again, we kept with the theme of wine versus liquor and beer. So maybe the percentage is not so much an issue. If the theme really is a winery, maybe a lower percentage isn't, isn't such a bad deal, or such an issue.
So can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just to make clear that this is a process that goes through a community zoning information meeting, not just the text amendment, obviously. We already have it on the process, but for, for Pamela Farms to come in, they would have to go through, it's a four and a half, five-month process. So just to make sure that everybody understands this, this is not an administrative process, it's a public hearing process, so that everybody knows that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's part of, again, hopefully for the cities can, well, see, the city, the citizens control as well as, you know, the elected and the staff to monitor what's coming in, so we'll process it, wouldn't be...
I got a question for Robin. So are they going to be applying, I guess, they're not going to be going on a concurrent basis, right? We're going to be approving this, and then she's going to come in and tell...
Start the process. So right now, this is targeted to be back to you for a final decision on November 3rd. So she could submit, you know, in October for it, and then we'd start her down the process, so.
I thought it was December 7th.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
December 7th.
December 7th. I've got another.
Sorry.
Thank you. So it's even worse. It's December 7th. I've got my other line of items.
Just because I kind of like can see both sides on this, so I'll probably just wait till the council.
Yeah.
All right. I guess we can just go on down to the item number three. What's council's thoughts on that? The hours? And I don't know, you know, Sarah, if you have any, how you came up with those?
It sounded a little bit, after talking about one and two, that council may be leaning more towards that newer use permit that Robin was talking about, where we have, I'm not quite sure how that's written, I haven't seen that, but where each individual farm winery would come to you, and at that point, council would create these criteria based off of the plot and their business proposal that they put forward. Is that more the appetite of council than laying out some ground rules like this?
Thoughts? I would tend to agree with that.
Okay.
Depends on the location and all that. So the other things we've done in the past, if, you know, depends on...
Well, we know it's going to be an AG1 area for what some of the basic parameters, they were already established. So those, those suggested times are not inappropriate with consideration of being an AG1 area. But I don't have an issue with it being open for discussion based on the individual circumstances.
Maybe we have a parameter where that's listed, these are the suggested, and then on an individual basis, if it comes before us, we can, the council has the ability to tweak it. That correct, Steve? I mean, Ken, does that work?
Right, it is. I mean, it's a, it's a little bit of a hybrid. So you've got a use permit, then you've also got the alcohol component. So two, I mean, that's a different sort of licensure. This, to me, is the land use element, and there's the alcohol. The alcohol is actually what gives us the, the greater ability to regulate on a year-by-year basis. So I think I'm comfortable with that, because the alcohol license expires, has to be renewed. That gives us, that gives us the regulatory ability to change our rules.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Paul?
Mr., yeah, I'm okay with that part of the interpretation, but I just, I guess I'm having a bit of trouble separating the, the fact that we've got one case before us that's, you know, got some very specific parameters that have been discussed openly in the, in the paper versus somebody that's still forecasted or nebulous to us. And I, you know, so I contemplate the fact that, I know Ms. Jackson's been on the record of talking about being other things as well, having weddings or being a bed and breakfast. With those considerations, where those, either of those might have activities that go beyond the 8:00 PM hour, would those be considered in the scenario we just talked about on a one-off basis? Or, or would we fold those in under a special event? Or how would that come into play?
Oh, stop me when I go astray. It, it all depends.
Yeah.
If, if there is, over the course of a year, that they have one small event there that's not going to necessarily change the use of the, of the land so much from what it is currently allowed to be. But if you start having, let's say, a wedding every weekend, it's now clearly had, the use has changed significantly enough that it is now really an event facility and not a farm winery.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, I think about the wineries up in North Georgia, many of them host weddings, and those would go into the evening beyond this. I don't, I don't know how we measure that into the mix of this, when we're talking about a parameter for a farm winery versus the event part of things that could take place at a farm winery.
I can look into that. I would have to think that they actually have two separate business licenses.
That might be the way to go.
And we have experience, unfortunately, with the situation. And we, we learned through that one exactly how we have to manage this should the use start to migrate.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
You know, number four, the activity areas, parking, blah, 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 100 feet from residential district, you know, I think that's probably important to have something in there. 100 feet's not too much, it would, you know, should, should be able to do that. I'm assuming, again, if someone's coming before us for a use permit, if they needed a variance on that and had a specific reason, it probably could be at least discussed during that process.
Right.
So everybody good with having a minimum 100-foot setback on that?
And that's the current language in, in many of our use permits.
Food service, thoughts on that?
So in general, we thought if people are going to be served alcohol, there should be some sort of food, whatever that looks like could be left up to their discretion, whether that's a cheese and cracker platter, or they, it's not prohibiting a full kitchen, or a microwave of some kind, but all those would have to go through if it was more than just refrigerator food. I would assume the fire marshal.
Just nuts and stuff, and...
Pardon?
Just nuts and stuff.
No, we'll all stay up here.
Tom's crackers, I'm good with that.
Well, when you say must be provided, I'm, like, that reads to me that the, that they have to provide the food, but I would think in this circumstance, a lot of the people are bringing their own food, I guess, so.
Okay.
I mean, you know what I mean, so I don't...
I wouldn't. I've been to several in North Georgia, and they all offer, you know, a cheese plate or preserves and crackers.
As long as it's offered.
Right.
Okay.
Right. But it makes it, you don't have to have a full kitchen. If you want to have pre-made cheese plates, they take the saran wrap off and, or whatever.
But this reads to me like they have to provide.
So you want it to, you don't like the word provided?
No, no, but I'm, I'm saying yes. If, if you, what I'm reading or thinking is good, you go there, and if you need some food, they have to have some kind of food there for you, a cheese plate or, you know, whatever.
Pretzels.
Pretzels or something like that, is that...
Well, that's the difference between must be provided and must be available.
There you go.
Okay?
That, that's...
So, so, and I get a little concerned about this particular language, because it assumes that food service somehow negates what else is going on at the venue, right? So if they're there to drink wine, oh, well, we need to provide them food. Why? Because they're drinking alcohol. Well, what difference does it make? Right? Is the food somehow supposed to offset alcohol consumption? If that's the purpose, then I think science wouldn't support you too much, because consuming alcohol just affects your blood, doesn't matter how much food you eat.
No, I see that point. I just, I don't know, I guess I kind of thought of it as something that you would want to have available. Doesn't mean everybody has to have it, but it's available. I mean, we've, we've been...
Fine.
Sometimes we'll get a cheese plate, sometimes we won't.
Right.
Ask what's in the business plan.
Business go back to, if it's, if there's not a food service and it's only serving alcohol, then we've got a bar winery.
Well, I think having something available food-wise, obviously patrons are going to, some of them are going to take advantage of that. It does change it from being just a bar.
Right.
But...
I mean, the grapes are grown there, it's a farm winery, with or without food.
Yeah, but if you're just serving alcohol.
The whole purpose of the place in the beginning, it's to give somebody a taste of Milton wine.
Right.
Or Georgia wine, or wine, okay? So that's the purpose.
But if I'm going to be a corner bar, and I'm only going to serve Milton wine, I'm providing the same service you've just described.
But not the same ambiance.
But no food.
Not the same, it's the experience. It's the experience, Paul.
Yeah, I know, I totally get the experience thing. I'm just trying to make sure we don't go down a path that we've suddenly are challenged because we don't allow bars, and we're actually allowing one.
If we think we're actually putting together a plan to support bars in Milton, then we should just stop right now, because that's not what we're trying to do.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
Here's what I say, I think it's a technical, I think it's all, yeah, I think it's almost a, it's almost a technicality by saying that, you know, food services will be provided. That does technically keep it from being, quote, bar. But we're not mandated that you have to sell, you know, every person in here has to buy a $10 cheese plate or whatever. I mean, that's a, a business decision. If, you know, everybody that comes in there wants to purchase something, then they set their business up to have a lot of food.
Right.
If, you know, one out of five purchases it, then, you know, maybe they have 10 cheese plates a night, and that's all they worry about. I don't think we're dictating that, correct? We're just having that available so that the ambiance is a little, it's, it's a different, the experience is a little different.
I think I was trying to point out that the language should be available, because we want to make it optional. We don't want to make it a requirement. Specifically, we don't want to make it a requirement for the proprietor to have to provide something that they now have to figure out how to include the cost in whatever the cost is to show up. And so I was trying to simplify, not complicate, and I wasn't thinking about it as a, we're setting up a bar, so.
So you, are you talking, rather than saying food services must be provided, food surfaces must be available?
Right.
Changing the word, or...
Encouraged?
Well, that's not...
Well, you don't want to go there.
Right.
The whole service thing, I mean, why don't we just say food must be available?
I mean, it could be packaged food, they could self-select, I mean, you know.
I think that's...
What's in the business plan? Why, why can't we just, I mean, I'm sure it's been thought out, and if, if they don't think food is appropriate, let's find out why.
Well, but I, I feel like, you know, by saying it's available, or we must have it made available, the business plan will, you know, if they don't sell any cheese and crackers, I'm just using that as an example, they don't sell any, then they're not going to have many available, but they'll have some in case...
That's fine.
Somebody that may be, you know, diabetic or something, but needs, you know, whatever.
I'm good with that.
Peyton?
I want to interject something, but I mean, I'll have a comment when you're done with this, sorry.
I don't think, is there any question on that licenses need to be obtained? I mean, that's...
No. I don't think so. You want them unlicensed?
It's legal.
I have a question.
Okay, got a question from...
I guess it's the old planning commission thoughts is, one thing that wasn't addressed in here that I don't know if will be addressed in the future ones is max number of people. Did y'all contemplate that or anything?
I think that's a fire marshal question.
That's true. That's a specific...
So we just, because I just remember when we do all the other special event use permits and stuff, there was always a max number. I just don't know if y'all...
So I think that comes back to that kind of, what I like to say, the Burger King way, you pick out what you want, or what it's going to be, and so there could be a condition of the use permit at the end.
At the, when she applies.
Right, right, exactly.
Then it'll all be inside consumption. It may be consumption on the grounds. And then your body count would be up or down based on how they intend to use the property.
Because I'm kind of like going like that. I'm flexible, but I think at some point that probably needs to be addressed.
And I think that that could be part of the letter of intent, you know, that they can say, I have X number of land, I anticipate X number of participants or attendees for, and the time of, of operation, blah, blah, blah. That can, I can work with the applicant to kind of go through all these different items. And, you know, let's say even if they forgot to say that, that can be part of the conditions that the planning commission and ultimately the council can approve, so.
Is there anything else? So do you guys have some feedback based on, I mean, I think in general, we talked about, you know, maybe making it a five-acre versus 20, and in word, it doesn't mean that that means, you know, it's all for actual production or vineyards or whatever, but a total property. What did we say on the gross revenue from sale? We, we actually wanted to kind of raise that and that cap, correct? I don't remember if we had...
Or take it out?
Or either take it out, either we...
Apparently I was on a roll of taking things out tonight, but that's, I was thinking that it, having a set limit was going to be difficult to manage and enforce, but that was, I don't know that anybody else commented on that other than me.
Yeah, I think Carol mentioned 25, I was thinking 25 gives us flexibility.
I'm all for deregulation, if that's where you want to go, I'm good with that, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, farm winery, their main, in order to get the state's regulation, their main thing has to be wine, so we could mark that out, and if any time it appears that the beer and liquor is 51%, then the farm winery statewide would regulate that.
Right. The underlying conditions...
You okay with putting a number in there, but just maybe raising the number, and that's reasonable?
Sure.
Kind of does the same thing, it deregulates it to a huge extent.
I think I was okay with that, yes.
So, you know, why don't we say, just for conversation, say 25%? And then you guys can think about it if, you know, when it comes back to us, you can change it if you want. We talked about the hours, parking, the 100 feet, everybody seemed okay with that. Got the direction on the food service, sort of, and the licenses, that makes sense? Okay. All right, anything, Paul?
Just a general question for staff. What's their operation look like today?
Yeah, question for Ms. Jackson.
Well, I'm not asking her the question.
Okay.
Because, and in the paper it says, while she waits for a special use permit to be drafted, Jackson will be staying active. She said the winery has been booked for several various events and has been unbelievably busy. So is it the winery that's busy?
I could probably answer that up.
Or is it special events that are busy? And she talks about how, you know, people are coming from the city of Atlanta, they don't have to drive to Delonaga. So what, what does the operation look like today?
I had that discussion today with the, with the city fire marshal, as did, as did Sarah. We're going, based on some of these articles, it has raised some eyebrows.
Yeah, that's my, raised mine.
We're going to connect with Ms. Jackson and, and just get a good feel for what, exactly what the operation looks like.
So, so we don't have a public answer for that today?
In what regard? What, what, what's your, if you have...
Is it an operating winery where she's receiving people on site?
It is an operating farm winery, and it's been so for quite some time.
Okay. And hosting special events today?
Hosting special events?
Well, it's what the paper said, hosting...
She may be hosting events, but nothing that has led, at least from our perspective, to the level of requiring a special event permit or something that's, that has changed the use so much to require it to become an event facility. But as we learn more about the operation and community development works with, with Ms. Jackson and our fire marshal works with Ms. Jackson, we'll ensure that there's, that there's compliance, and based on Ms. Jackson's experience with us, I anticipate no, no problems there.
Great.
Yeah, I would, I can see how maybe they, you know, just by her being open under what's already approved, and 25 people show up or whatever, call that an event, but as long as they're within the legalities of what they're allowed to do.
But the paper's portraying it as is consistent with what we're trying to look at, and that there's not a full-blown operation that we might be able to get some, either some learnings from, or some cautions from.
Good point. All right, everybody else good? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And if the city clerk could please call the next item.
The third item is discussion of fiscal year 2021 budget. Ms. Bernadette Harville. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we'll be discussing the proposal for the 2021 budget. Tonight, we have in the chambers on the entire leadership team. So if you have any questions regarding anything that needs an expert, I can get one of them up here to answer any questions you may have. There are a few things I'd like to mention before we begin going through all of the spreadsheets. First, there have been some minor adjustments to the presentation that was linked to the packet last Thursday, including some clarifications to the variance explanations, a formula correction, and a few edits to the amended budget requests as well as a proposed budget request, which I will point out as we go along through the presentation. Again, please note that this is a draft. The final budget proposal will be presented in September. And I will also point out in those presentations, any material changes from the discussions we have this evening. Before we get into the details of the proposed budget, I felt that it was important to discuss the pending amendment to FY 2020's budget. On the screen, you will see a green header. Anytime you see this color scheme, it indicates an amendment. Any newly proposed budgets will have the blue header for ease of recognizing what you are looking at. Here we have the original FY 2020 budget as approved by council with the initiatives allocated to their respective departments. In the next column, you can see the amendments.
I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure.
Didn't hear. Okay, now you will see.
Do we need to have more money for our tea?
Now you will see. Now you will see before you the original 2020 budget as approved by mayor and council. Again, when we get to the expenditures section, it includes the allocated initiatives to their respective departments. In the next column, you will see the amendments that were approved by mayor and council back in June. And adjacent to that, you will see the proposed amendments outlined that will be presented in full detail in September alongside the FY 2021 budget. These amendments are what the variance discussions we will have this evening are derived from. So I want to go over some of the highlights for clarity. Milton has been fortunate that although we have experienced declines in certain revenue due to COVID-19 and the related economic impact, it has not been as severe as originally anticipated back in June. We continue to utilize a conservative approach to the projections for both FY 2020 and FY 2021 as required by city ordinance. When you look at the general fund budget summary, I would like to point out that anything in the first set of calculations above the first subtotal here are the more routine revenue categories. There are some non-recurring categories such as intergovernmental revenues, contributions and donations, and proceeds from sale of assets within this category. But those revenues are considered more one-time sources or outlined in the second section, such as transfers in from other funds. The proposed revenue amendments here include an increase to title ad valorem in the amount of $103,785. House Bill 799 led to an increase in the city portion of distribution, the distribution formula beginning in July of 2020, and that is showing us a slight increase in what we anticipated. Intangible tax, we have increased by $222,099. Intangible taxes derived from a percent of the notes written on mortgages, and we believe refinancing is driving the increase in this category. Lost revenues, we expect to be up by $545,270. It was not as adversely impacted as originally anticipated. We originally thought we would see a 40% decrease for April collections, which came in around 30% decreased. And we projected 30% decline for May and June, coming in at 21 and 10 respectively. Alcohol beverage excise taxes and occupational taxes are seeing a slight increase. Even with council's emergency orders to allow for delayed due, uh, due dates, these taxes, many of the businesses have continued to pay on time. Lastly, you'll see down here, a transfer in from the revenue bond fund in the amount of $528,868. This is a reimbursement for bond eligible expenses that were paid for prior to finalizing the bond. So again, this is just a one-time source that will not recur again in FY 2021. The expenditures follow a similar methodology. Everything in the second set of calculations are related to transfers out, including Milton's pay-as-you-go contributions to the capital projects fund. In the end of your amendment, you will see a true-up of benefit expenses across departments as the city budgets an average expected cost per employee at the beginning of the year. Depending on the plan selection, the actual cost per employee may be slightly higher or lower, and these amendments account for that. This year, we have also released any budgeted salary and benefit funds related to vacancies to get closer to anticipated actuals. That will drive a lot of the increases you see against the 2021 budget as we will again budget for full expectancy of, um, full employment. Here we have legal fees related to COVID-19 emergency ordinances, special called meetings, enclosed prevailed cases in Milton's favor, yielding expenses higher than originally anticipated. Information services delayed the implementation of the voice-over IP system, which will more than cover those additional legal fees. COVID-19 caused the cancellation of Camp Joyful Souls, and you'll see a corresponding release of funds in the Parks Recreation Active Department. The majority of the released funds will go towards a transfer out in the capital projects fund to address the following projects. Improvements to the passive acres of former Milton Country Club in the amount of $250,000. The final quoted cost of the comprehensive plan came in at around $48,700 higher than it originally anticipated. There'll be funding going towards the purchase of a portable generator for City Hall. And there will be $115,000 set aside in a new account called site improvements in the passive parks department. As you know, the city has acquired many green space properties that we spoke about earlier this evening, and they, many of them do not have a current master plan, but they may be in need of some capital improvements. This money will be set aside for council to determine what may need to be done and that could be addressed right away. An example, that would be the dam repairs on Lackey Road. So that covers the larger amendments of the general fund that will inform the discussion we're about to have regarding the FY 2021 budget. So here again, you'll see in blue, this is now we are moving into the FY 2021. As you know, the city's 2016 through 2020 strategic plan is coming to an end. This budget keeps that in mind and knows that council will work alongside city staff and the public with a consultant to formulate a new five-year strategic plan. In this proposal, you will see funds set aside for the purposes of implementing year-one initiatives from this new strategic plan, as well as funding to accomplish department goals that stand independent of this plan, such as IT security, public safety requirements, and routine maintenance of city facilities. This budget also proposes a request for a 3% increase of salaries across all positions. And lastly, I would like to remind everyone that the FY 2020 budget amendments column does include those amendments we just went over. Once again, in the top section, we have our more routine revenue sources coming in at an anticipated 1.1% decrease year-over-year from the amended to the proposed. We will discuss some of those line items in detail shortly. In the next section, you can see that the one-time transfer in from the revenue bond fund is creating a larger overall decrease of 3.2% for revenues overall. As we discuss the department variances in detail momentarily, the last thing I'd like to point out on this screen is the total expenditures of $31,183,190. This has been updated to include a reduced request in community development, as well as a formula correction I spoke about a little earlier for the contingency calculation. Lastly, the city by law is authorized to utilize fund balance as a funding source, which you can see here. This will result in a projected fund balance of $8,425,848, which is more than enough to ensure that the city retains its required reserves of 25% of the subsequent year's revenues in both FY 2020 and FY 2021. Before you, you have the general fund revenue details. This breaks down those categories into more specific line items. And I'll go over some of the more important highlights or the greater highlights. The real property revenues are projected at 95% collection of the data provided by Fulton County. We'll go over that later this evening in the military presentation in greater detail as well. This is coming in at approximately $209,624 lower than last year's current projections. The anticipated amount for intangible taxes took into consideration an average of the past four years plus activity to date in FY 2020. That projection is looking to bring in figures more in line with years past at a decrease of $171,099 or 39% from FY 2020. You can see that right here. Local option sales tax revenues are anticipated to be impacted by 20% of the FY 2020 actuals in the first quarter, 10% of those in the second and third quarter, and about 5% from FY 2019's fourth quarter collections, yielding an overall increase of $184,800 or 2.1%. Moving down, we have the court fines and forfeitures account. Due to COVID-19, we know that the police department had to, um, handle some of their activity differently, as well as the courts. Court had a lot of closures, but we are anticipating a conservative game towards prior year actuals at a variance of $150,000 increase from FY 2020. Another area impacted by the current economic conditions are interest rates. We have seen rates plummet and we do not expect them to return anytime soon. This can be seen in the projected drop of $126,000 from FY 2020's current amended budget. And lastly, you see the drop we spoke about with the revenue bond fund transfer in. That was a one-time source. Sorry, I went a little too far. So now we'll move on to the general fund expenditure variances by department. Here before you have the mayor and council department. You can see a $5,000 decrease to professional fees. That is primarily being driven by the need for less facilitators at the council retreats with staff, saving $5,000 year-over-year. In the travel line, I'd like to explain something that you're going to see throughout a lot of the departments this year. COVID-19 caused a lot of cancellations to travel and conferences. So what we did in the 2020 amended budget was release those funds to go towards other items that we could address this year. So it makes the appearance of a large increase, but you can see that we're going more towards prior year tendencies and we're also budgeting for full attendance at these conferences, which may or may not occur. Next, we have the city clerks department. The large driver of change here, you'll see in the revenue section. For FY 2020, there was a full vacancy all year in the deputy clerk position. Towards the end of the year, we requested a reclassification of that position back to a records clerk, and that is currently vacant. So you'll see what looks like a large increase, but it's really bringing back the projection of having fully anticipated employment for FY 2021 for both full-time and the part-time position in the city clerks department. In the professional fees, you'll see a large decrease of $64,936. We have elections that are required every other year for us to cover a certain portion through our IGA with Fulton County, and we do not have a planned election for FY 2021. In the city manager's department. See if I can make that a little smaller so everyone can see it. In the city manager's department, you see an increase of $70,000 to professional fees. The original budget for the strategic plan consultant was fully contained in FY 2020, with that being delayed slightly by COVID-19 and us starting a little later in the year. We had to move those funds out of '20 into '21, which looks like an increase there, but it's really just moving the funds. In the finance department, again, we had some vacancies that were experienced throughout the year of FY 2020. We are crossing our fingers and hoping for full employment throughout FY 2021, looking like an increase there. In the administrative fees, you'll see a decrease of $27,500. We have the current merchant services provider, credit card processor, where we have to collect the fees and then pay them out. This is in anticipation of switching over to a new provider who can handle all convenience fees themselves, and they will not flow through the city's revenues or expenditures. You will see a corresponding decrease in revenues if you look at the detail line for convenience fees for that. The increase to professional fees of $15,800 is primarily being driven by a request for post-employment benefits actuary to look at that plan if the council chooses to move forward with it. In addition, graphic design fees, instead of being housed completely in the communications department, will now be spread across departments, and finance has a $7,000 line item for that, um, in this budget for FY 2021. Down in the maintenance contracts section, we have an increase of $12,686, being primarily driven by the request for a budget module add-on to our current transparency tool. We'll be able to model different kinds of scenarios and make changes much quicker than the current Excel spreadsheets allow us to. Information services, this is an area where we have looked to have an increase in funding. First and foremost, to handle IT security. In the maintenance contracts section, you will see an increase related to, and then also correspondingly into the professional fees for moving from the platform of E1 and G1 to, sorry, E1 and G, E1 and E3 to G1 and G3, which means it's going to be more secure and that will, David could speak further on that if you need any details on that. Additionally, we're looking to have enhancements to the VMware solution and the offsite backup. Also migrating the platforms and having server and SQL licensing upgrades. You'll see a decrease to the salaries and wages and benefit line items in this department. There were two full-time employees in-house for this department. We are moving the GIS management position to a third-party contractor. They actually already handled this for us, so there's no increase in this year's budget for that. But we will be removing the budget for the second full-time personnel position in this department. In human resources, the increase here is primarily being driven by the budgeting for turnover. Every time we have turnover at the leadership level, we typically have a regional or national recruitment, and those funds will be able to provide for that, should that happen in FY 2021. Again, we didn't need to do that in FY 2020, so those funds were released. Here in communications, as we spoke about, um, throughout many of the other departments, there was a slight vacancy in the, one of the positions for the beginning of the year. So we're again budgeting for full employment throughout the year. You'll see a decrease to the professional fees. Again, that's because we're now budgeting for the graphic designer throughout the departments in which the actual cost is incurred, such as finance, and no longer within this department. In community outreach and engagement, there's just a slight change. We have moved the two summer interns, originally approved to be part of the city manager's department, over to community outreach and engagement. They fit better in that department and be able to get some of the projects that we needed completed and also to give them a better opportunity and experience with the city. In addition, you'll see a slight drop to machinery and equipment that's being driven by the need for two laptops with an FY 2020 that will need to be purchased again in FY 2021. In municipal court, we have a couple of things to speak about. As you know, police, court, and fire are all moving to the new public safety complex here shortly. And we will no longer have any leased properties. And as you can see, the drop here in rental land and buildings of $125,206 will be repeated in the police department. Those fees will go along towards paying down the debt service for the revenue bond fund for that public safety complex. You'll see increases to cleaning services, grounds repair and maintenance, and generals, or, and, sorry, utilities, all related to having a building operating for a full year as opposed to a couple of months. And lastly, you will see a decrease to furniture fixtures and machinery equipment due to the one-time needs to outfit the new building. That won't be recurring in FY 2021. The police department again had some vacancies, looking to fill those positions and keep them filled for FY 2021, budgeting at full employment. Same story with them. They had a lot of drops due to the one-time cost to outfitting the new building and also getting rid of that land and, um, sorry, rental land and buildings line item. Some other highlights within the police department include the fact that they're removing property and evidence in-house when they get to the new public safety complex. That is yielding a reduction in maintenance contract costs and will no longer have an IGA with the city of Alpharetta. In the fire department, um, fire has mandatory staffing. So typically their salaries, any savings and vacancies are offset by the need for some overtime, so they don't have as large of a variance there. Again, they have the same story. They're moving into the new building, so they have increases to their utility, their repair and maintenance, and their cleaning items. In the facility repair and maintenance item, you will also see a request to remodel Station 43 with the admin staff. With the admin staff moving out, they're going to have an ability to increase the training area slightly and remodel for just the remaining admin staff that'll stay there. You'll also see at the very bottom that we are no longer having to pay any lease fees towards Station 43. We made our last payment in FY 2020. Those savings also will go along to paying down the debt service of the new public safety Public works. In the public works department, you will see a decline in professional fees of $74,521. The leading cause of this is the ability for the city to now be able to handle the MS4 and MPDES compliance in-house with our city engineer. It was previously handled by a third party, and now we'll be able to do that in-house with little change in duties. Some of those savings were offset by COVID-19-related delays to the citywide traffic speed study. They have resulted in the need to move a portion of that funding into FY 2021, so you'll see that offset there. In the contract labor category, the city is going to need to rebid the right-of-way maintenance contract on the original proposed budget set, right-of-way maintenance and mowing. It's just the maintenance contract, so that's going to lead to possibility of increased costs there, so we've anticipated that. And then we can move on to active parks and recreation. I'd like to point out that although you're seeing a decrease here, that doesn't mean we are no longer investing in the parks. We actually have the majority of the parks' investments going towards capital improvements, and you can see those later this evening in the capital improvements in the capital projects fund. As for the general fund activities, Joyful Souls, again, had to be canceled, so you will see an increase in salaries, some of the contract labor, the general supplies, and other line items corresponding to Joyful Souls. You'll see a decrease to some of the facility repair and maintenance line items. We had one-time repairs and improvements at former Milton Country Club, including resurfacing the pool deck, some lighting repairs at Bill Memorial Park, and things like that that won't need to recur in FY 2021. And one of the big items I'd like to draw your attention to is the maintenance contracts line item. We no longer have the IGA with City of Alpharetta, so that will save the city a substantial amount of money to be able to put towards the parks. Here we have community development. Community development, too, has some vacancies in FY 2020, hoping not to have them in FY 2021. You will see a large decrease to professional fees. This decrease is offset by a request we'll talk about later in the initiative section to bring one of the contract positions in-house, and we have a cost-benefit analysis showing where that will actually save the city some money. And also, they have an increase to maintenance contracts. This will be the first year that their permit tracking and online planner review software will be up and running, so that's year one maintenance for that. Here we have economic development. As you know, Sarah led the charge to change all the updates to chapter four. We will not have those expenses recurring in FY 2021, so there'll be a decrease to the economic development department. Our general and administration handles all of the expenses related to things purchased around City Hall, like pens, paper, that you can't really attribute to one department, so we house them as a general administration line. You will see a decrease here as Laserfish is up and running, and we've sent all of our boxes out to be scanned and become electronic. We have no more need for offsite storage, so there's a slight decrease to this department due to that cancellation of that offsite storage payment. Again, for legal, we're expecting to go closer to prior year normals. We had those expenses related to COVID-19 and some lawsuits that were closed in the city's favor. Risk management, that's where we house all of our general insurance liability costs, and we're anticipating a 1.7% increase there. General government buildings, here we have our City Hall, the Thomas S. Bird Senior House, and the Public Works Maintenance Building. I'll house their expenses here, and we will have a new contract for cleaning, which is causing a slight increase for the cleaning services year-over-year. There's a decrease to the facility repair and maintenance. In FY 2020, they painted the birdhouse, had some septic and lighting maintenance costs that won't recur in FY 2021. And lastly, one of the larger increases I'd like to draw your attention to is the furniture and fixtures of $60,000. While the city is outfitting the new public safety complex, we were able to take advantage of getting a discount on the furniture, which is the same furniture we have here at City Hall, so we were going to finish out, building out the second floor and turning one of the downstairs conference rooms into an office space. The second-floor buildings will be innovative and allow anyone to come to City Hall with their laptop and plug in and be able to work from here, so it'll be kind of a hotspot for anyone to be able to work here at City Hall with us. Passive parks and green space, here is the expenses to maintain the properties that we talked about earlier purchased with those green space bond funds. We also have Birmingham Park included with this as more of a passive facility than, along with the definition of the other ones. You'll see a decrease in the professional fees line item. We had some surveying work out there related to the purchase of Station 43. We have some land adjacent, which will actually become part of the park, so we had to survey it for adequate value, and that those costs won't recur again in FY 2021. You'll see a decrease in the lawn care section, but I'd like to point out that it is offset by some of the increases to grounds repair maintenance. While we'll be mowing less at former Milton Country Club, letting it go back to its more natural state rather than a golf course state, we will be increasing the trail maintenance, and so that'll be a corresponding offset to that. And lastly, you'll see under the property and sites, that's a cost related to purchasing the land up there as part of the 43 lease end, and that won't recur in FY 2021. If that program is not completed by September, we will move those funds over through fund balance to pay for that in FY 2021. Debt service, very simple. We are no longer housing debt in the general fund. It will all be housed in the green space bond fund for the geo-bond-related debt and in the revenue bond fund for our revenue debt, so you will no longer see debt service in the general fund. Other costs and financing uses here, we have contingency as required by city law, 1% of our budgeted expenditures, as well as our transfer out to capital projects funds going down by $400,188, and our transfer out to the revenue bond fund increasing, as this will be the first year of a full year's worth of interest on principal, or sorry, debt service on principal and interest for the revenue bond. That is continuing operations for the general fund. Does anyone have any questions before we move on?
Any questions?
Okay, so we'll move on to new initiatives. Again, as I mentioned, we are all in preparation of the new strategic plan, so we have set aside $200,000 in order to address any of the initiatives for year one that council deems in the new strategic plan. In addition to that, we have some requirements. Station 44 has been completed. We are moving the staff from Station 42 over to 44 while 42 is being rebuilt. The anticipated completion of 42 is around August of next year, so this request for staffing for Station 44 is for two months of FY 2021. Again, we are anticipating to get a grant, so this cost includes the ability to get those positions with the grant. Should we not receive the grant, we will allocate funding from another source. In public works, you'll see a street sweeping pilot program. Any areas of the city with curb and gutter have had some debris accumulation, and that's around Crab Apple, Highway 9, Deerfield, anywhere with a curb and gutter. This program will attempt to try to rid that with a street sweeper. Next, you'll see a backhoe and dump truck request. In the general fund, you're only going to see the portion related to the maintenance and insurance. The actual cost of the items we'll see later on in the capital request, and we've done a cost-benefit analysis, and the backhoe being more of a 20-year piece of equipment. Will have a break even in year seven, and the dump truck being a 12- to 15-year piece of equipment will have a break even in year four. So there are requests to bring those in-house as opposed to continuing renting them year-over-year. And lastly, in community development, we have two requests related to positions. The request, again, to bring in the soil and erosion control manager. This is currently a $150,000 a year consultant contract, and we are able to bring them in at this $92,891 request, saving the city approximately about $50,000 a year, except in year one when we have to buy a truck for the position, and any year we have the replacement truck. So we also have a detailed cost-benefit analysis in here regarding that position. The last request is to reclassify the planning technician to planner one. The city has a need for another planner position. We'll be able to handle more in-house capabilities, reduce the need for consultants, and we have a qualified person who's actually handling a lot of these responsibilities now in-house with us to be able to take over that position should council approve it. So that brings us to a conclusion for the general fund. And again, all of these details are available. If anyone wants to go over them, I can go back to any of the slides if anyone would like to see more information on that. Next, we have our special events fund. Again, COVID-19 caused a cancellation to many of our events in FY 2020. Our community outreach and engagement manager, Courtney Spriggs, and I went through and recognized some savings and some, but reduced, released the funds for anything that couldn't occur this year, leaving a fund balance that will be able to cover the request for FY 2021. As you can see, the hotel motel tax revenue will be down to about $24,000, what we're anticipating, although some of the other revenue lines haven't been hit as hard, our hotel has been, so we're not anticipating that to return anytime soon, honestly. Here again, we have our events funds specifically broken down by event. We have Crab Apple Fest, Craver and Crab Apple. The literary festival is no longer handled by the city. The authors handle that event. We have Veterans Day, the tree lighting. We changed the name to Christmas in Milton, so we can kind of include the Christmas activities that go on throughout the city, and you'll see an increase to this line item for a partnership with the Milton Arts Council to bring a Dickinson-esque Victorian market to the city. This will allow carolers and vendors to set up to sell crafts, kind of a little, a new Christmas event that'll occur if approved. We have the breakfast with Santa over Fire Station 43, the mayor's run, Earth Day, our spring events, including the egg hunt. Rock for rescues is no longer occurring, so that will be no longer part of the city's events. Memorial Day, our summer series, involuntary appreciation, and then in other events, you'll also see a requested increase for us to partner with the restaurants to have a Milton Restaurants Week. So this will include promotion and an application and website for that kind of event. Moving on to some of our other special revenue funds, we have our confiscated assets budget. Here we have a fund balance, and when PD identifies a qualifying training or piece of equipment, we will allocate funding for that. The E911 budget, E911 funds come in from the state that go straight to the city of Alpharetta to cover Milton's portion of the E911 center and all the dispatchers, so that's just an in-and-out for the city. The hotel motel tax fund, the incoming revenues from the hotel have to go into this fund before they're disbursed to the special events fund, so this is just an in-and-out as well. You'll see that same decrease down to $24,000. Here we have our capital projects funds budget summaries. This just gives you an overview of expenditures and revenues year-over-year for the last few years. We have our main capital projects funds, which houses all the projects that don't need to be distributed into other funds by law. Our green space bond fund has our bond proceeds as well as the debt service on the green space bond fund. The TSPLOST fund has all of our revenues and expenditures related to that approved TSPLOST program. Our capital grant fund is all of our grants, including currently, we have three grants out there at Providence Park. We have an exhaust extractor grant for exhaust extractor upgrades for our cancer initiative at two of the stations. We also have the Smart Communities Challenge Grant and a few others. In our impact fees fund, here's where we house the revenues and expenditures related to our impact fees. And then lastly, our revenue bond fund, again, both the bond proceeds and debt service on our 2019 series revenue bond for the public safety complex, the rebuilding of Station 42, as well as the citywide alerting system for the fire stations. Here we have our overall capital improvement plan. This is the spreadsheet that shows you every project we have, the estimated cost of that project, what we've previously approved to be allocated to that project, the available balance, and the new request for the seven-year plan. What I'm going to focus in on for the last part of the presentation is what I feel is most important to most people is our pay-as-you-go program and what funds will be going towards that in FY 2021. The first line you'll see is vehicle replacement reserve. That is our funding required to maintain turnover vehicles before they reach the point of diminishing returns, so where it's more costly to maintain them than to replace them. And this is where we have the funding for police departments, steady over the years to be able to replace those vehicles. At fire station roof replacement, we had funds set aside for Fire Station 42 as we knew the roof was close to giving away. Now that we'll be rebuilding the whole station, we can release those funds towards other projects. The vehicle and apparatus replacement, same thing, to turn over the large fire trucks and battalion vehicles for that department. The self-contained breathing apparatus replacement account, putting in $112,850 will allow the department to replace all of the currently going-to-expire equipment for the end of FY 2021 or the beginning of FY 2022. In public works, we put pay-as-you-go money towards our bridge replacement program. Anytime we have a large structural repair needed or replacement of a bridge, the money comes out of this account. Here at the southeast Crab Apple Connector, this is going to be the road that connects Charlotte to Mid-Broadwell and Broadwell. This is the money for the concept plan design. Once that plan is there, we will know better what the full project will cost, and we'll have better expense totals for that, and we're hoping to put that towards a TSPLOST II possibility if that is approved by the residents. Gravel roads maintenance, again, some of these costs can be deferred or offset by if they were approving to bring in-house the backhoe and dump truck. We'll be able to release some of the funds from that account. Pavement management, I'd like to point out that we currently have a five-year plan set. These numbers are very specific in the first five years to that plan. There's additional L-Meg grant money and capital revenues that go towards that, and then when we get into year six and seven and eight, we're looking more towards the average of what it costs, and when we have a new five-year plan, we'll update those figures. In the major stormwater structures, same as the bridge, if something major happens to our stormwater, we have the money here to repair or replace those. I'd like to point out that we've changed this sidewalk construction repair to the sidewalk and trail construction repair. This account will house the funds that you'll be able to utilize towards the new trail plan that you're looking at. These funds, along with some of the impact fees, as well as some of the money we have within the parks budgets, will be able to address some of those trails that are being requested. Once you approve them, we'll move those funds to the proper location. Public works yard improvements, we have the new public works maintenance building, of course, over time, there will need to be some improvements out there. The materials need to be covered, so a pole barn and some fencing are being requested, and this is the funding project plan for that over the next seven years. Public works also has vehicles that they have replacement reserve for. The traffic signal battery backups, this allows for if we have a blackout, for those signals to remain online, so no person has to go out and direct traffic, so this will allow for additional traffic lights to have that feature. Parks and Rec Active also has vehicle replacement reserve. Providence Park and former Milton Country Club both have master plans, so you'll see those parks specifically outlined here. The former Milton Country Club, we have funded phase one and part of phase two, so we have enough funding to be able to get that work started, so we will begin picking up funding again for that project in FY 2022. Then in the passive parks, you'll see that site improvements account we spoke about, setting aside some money for you to be able to address any capital items that are needed at the parks that don't have master planning. Here we are increasing it by $50,000. And then we have the former Milton Country Club passive side, and again, we have some money towards phase one A, B, and C set aside in that fund, and we'll continue to fund that at $200,000 over the next seven years. We have the gateway and wayfinding signage and historic markers. We are putting some funding towards this to continue to improve upon the gateway signage as you enter our city, as well as some of the wayfinding signage eventually in Birmingham Crossroads and the Deerfield and Highway 9 area. Lastly, you'll see the permit tracking software is a decrease of $30,146. The original anticipation for the year-one maintenance was budgeted in this account to be moved over to the general fund when that project kicked off, and that's where we are now. And then I just have one more thing, is our capital initiative summary. As we spoke about, the public works department has identified that bringing these two pieces of equipment in-house will save the city's money, and the backhoe will be a $153,000 investment, and the dump truck an $85,000 investment. And lastly, we have the truck for the soil and erosion control manager at $35,485. If you have any answer, any questions?
Can you give us a little bit more detail?
I can keep going.
Yes, sir.
We're projecting slightly less revenue
Yes, sir.
in the coming year. We're increasing our expenditures by the, and to make up the difference, we're dipping into our reserves.
I don't choose the word dipping.
And we're not going into reserves.
Right, let me clarify really quickly. We have a fund balance, which accumulates any monies that we have not used. Our reserves, which are required, are 25%. So we are, our fund balance is exceeding our reserves, and per our policy, we are allowed to use it as a funding source.
No, no, I get that. I understand that. We're staying in line with everything. My point is that we are using a revenue source that in the normal year we wouldn't have used.
We actually have been using it, and the majority of all cities use it, so it's very routine.
Okay.
I think to clarify what I think you're saying, and I see Joe's point, but also, it's just money left. It's not in our reserve. Our reserve has to be set aside here. This is money left over
Correct. So we, like I said, we fund all of our positions at 100%, having 100% employment. We have benefit expectations that people will take some of, you know, the average plan, so wherever we have savings, that money, if we don't directly allocate it to a project in the current year, will go into our fund balance to be able to utilize this funding for the next year.
In fact, you must spend it on one-time expenditures.
Okay, let me try again. Four years ago, what was the over/under from an expenditure point? Four years ago, what was the over-under from an expenditure point of view?
Okay, so there's a difference between the over-under at budgeting time and then the actuals. So when you see actuals, we came in and didn't need at the end of the day to utilize that. So let's go, is that what we're talking about down here?
Yeah.
So when, for example, when we budgeted last year, we were at the same estimated use of fund balance almost, and now we're coming in to only actually need about 500, $427,000. So it does vary based on our original projections than what goes on, since we have to be so conservative in our revenues.
Understood, understood. My point was going to be, it's a pretty major step in terms of our estimates to go from where we are winding up this year versus where we're winding up next year, potentially.
I'm not sure I, what do you mean by that?
What's the difference between 1.6 million and 427,000?
You want me to do the math?
Well, no. My point is, we're projecting a lot more expense than revenue for this coming budget year.
So really, the, if you go up a line because you're including the inter-fund transfers out
Yeah, I was going to say, so if
The line above the subtotal is probably where you should be focusing, because you're including a transfer as if it was, you're in your own bank account, you transfer savings to checking, that's including that as an expenditure. It's how we have to report it. Your subtotal on the line above is truly what our numbers look like.
And I'd like to also point out that we utilize those to be able to fund our pay-as-you-go program.
Okay. Let me try one more time. What are revenues? It just didn't, millions of dollars?
Yep, 31.8, was last year or so, we're at 29.5 projected.
Okay, so 29.5. And what do we think our expenditures are going to be this year?
But I believe what Steve's pointing out is that when you're comparing the recurring, it would be that 29.496 number to that 24.562. Is that what you're talking about?
Okay.
Our expenditures are not exceeding our revenues by, by any, in any way, shape, or form. The remain, whatever, whatever revenues we have in excess of operating costs gets transferred into our PGO system, so goes into our, into our capital accounts, because we don't bond for those things.
So we could operate this way as far into the future as we need to, provided that those two numbers don't ever change, the expenditures, the projected expenditures and the projected revenue.
Correct. And if they did, we would have to either reduce some kind of service level at the general maintenance and operating level, or reduce our PGO funding.
That's how we've been able to weather storms, like you just saw going through with, with COVID. Other municipalities were scrambling because of the reduction of, of loss. We weren't scrambling because we were able to move money around from our, our PGO.
I didn't, I didn't mean to make everybody defensive right off the bat. That wasn't my purpose. I was asking some pretty simple questions. I give us high marks for doing smart things all the time. We're recognized on a regular basis for our financial controls. I understand all that, and it's you guys that make that stuff happen. I'm not trying to be critical of that, okay?
And if I came across a defensive, I didn't mean to. I just, when you, we don't dip into our reserves, because that was on the front page of the Milton Herald last year.
I will own the mistake of using the word dip. I, I will own that mistake, okay? I just wanted to make sure that our strategy and how we address what is a very unknown environment for ourselves is sustainable. That's what I really wanted to point out, okay? And you're saying that it is, okay? So you also mentioned in the very beginning something about a 3% increase across the board for salaries, okay? So, and we break down salaries by every single individual department. I tried to keep up. Can you give me a rough idea what 3% really means?
I can get that calculation if you give me a moment. I would have to go to another spreadsheet.
Okay, is, is $350,000 a rough estimate, you think?
I really would hate to just throw a number out there. I will get you the number. I would hate to throw a number. I will get you the number between this presentation and our military presentation. I will have that number for you.
The concern that I have is that, right now, we've got citizens of our city who were employed six months ago who aren't employed today. We've got businesses and business owners in the city of Milton that were thriving enterprises six months ago, and they're out of business today, or they're finding it hard to stay in business today, okay? I don't really have a problem recognizing merit, where we need to recognize merit and recognizing good performance from employees. I get a little bit worried when we just say "across-the-board increases," and we don't package them properly in terms of what they're really about. And I'm not up here trying to say that our employees don't deserve increases. That's not my point. My point is that we've got citizens that are experiencing pain, and we're just saying we're applying an "across-the-board increase," and I don't think that that is a very good message. And I'm not directing this at you, Bernadette.
The expert.
Right, I know. So, and I'm not actually looking for an answer to that question right now. I wanted to confirm that I heard you correctly. I wanted to confirm that the number that I think is the number is really the number. So I'll let you follow up with that, but I just want to make sure that we are doing right by not only our employees, but by our citizens as well.
Steve was able to get our spreadsheet open and get that number for you.
Okay.
$1,626.
Okay.
See, I would've said 350. You were trying to get me to say 350.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and just to, we obviously, we discussed this a little bit already before this meeting. Part of the, the overall, the 3% raise across the board is to try to keep us competitive with our neighboring jurisdictions. I just lost one of my star employees to Alpharetta, because I can't, I can't compete with the lateral move she made for $20,000 more a year. This has been a challenge for us in all of our operations, and we barely keep up with our, with our peers at 3%. And we end up having to do market adjustments, which you've seen in police and fire and admin as we continue. I agree with you. I have plenty of relatives and friends in the private sector, and I feel for those that have suffered during this downturn. But I don't necessarily see that as having an impact on this. The work still continues on here. We haven't slowed down. We're not, our, our revenues haven't been, haven't been affected, and we're still very viable. The only thing we risk is losing good employees if we continue, if we don't keep up with our, our peers. That being said, I do like the idea of merit-based increases. And as we discussed, I, we just need to be in a position to have a system that will stand up to the, stand up to the challenge on that. But I do believe that we should have a merit-based increase system here.
All right. And I might just want to add a comment, because to Joe's point, that's very, you know, that's an important perspective, and of course, you know, when the economy, when there are issues and the economy's down and uncertainty, you know, any type of raise raises a flag and all that. But sometimes, not only to Steve's point, but, and we've had this discussion before years ago, you've got to put it in perspective, too. All of us are in the private, private side, and we may all be, I know I'm hurting somewhat now from this situation, and we all know a lot of people that are. But when things turn back around, you know, they may lose 50% of their income now, but they may gain 100% or huge bonuses, or, you know, they may have flux, you know, they may go down 30% and go up 40%. So we have to realize, these are all employees that are staying steady in a very small increase. So, you know, I'd love to be able to say to, you know, our employees, hey, you know, you guys okay cutting 20% of your, your pay now because things are tight? But then we have to offer them 30% bump at some other point, so we, you know, we have to look at a long-term perspective or whatever on that, so average it out. But it's all, all good discussion and all good points, so. Any other questions? Can we go over it one more time?
You'll get it two more times.
In another week.
Next month, two more times.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Everybody worked on that. Okay. That'll conclude our work session. You know what, and before I say that, do we, we didn't have any public comment on that, did we?
No, sir.
Just want to make sure. That'll conclude our work session. So now we'll move into our special call meeting. Appreciate everybody being here. I would like to call the special call meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, August 10th, 2020, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the August 10th, 2020 special called meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Since there are no public comment, I will waive the public comment rules. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jamison.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookley.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morag.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Laura Bentley is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, if the city clerk will please sound the next item, which is the approval of the agenda.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 2216.
Okay, do I have a motion on the agenda? For approval?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as prepared.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Morag. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, our next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Then we will move on to the consent agenda. If, Tim, you would please read that item.
The first item is approval of a request for an emergency vehicle hybrid beacon traffic signal on State Route 9 at new fire station emergency access driveway. Agenda item number 2217. Mr. Robert Drury.
Okay, I believe this is on the consent agenda, so I'll bring that up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion from Councilmember Morag, a second from Councilmember Cookley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, we're going to move on to unfinished business. If city clerk would please sound that item.
Consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to establish the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Milton for fiscal year 2021 and for other purposes. Agenda item number 2213. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Okay, I'm going to wait this time till I'm sure the presentation is shown. They're going to make me look foolish. All right, here I am. I think I got it? That IT family pays off. Okay, thank you. Tonight, we'll be discussing the milit rate for the 2020 tax year, which corresponds to the FY 2021 revenue projections we outlined earlier this evening. First, I will review some definitions to clarify some of the topics we'll be discussing. Next, I will go over the meeting and advertising requirements for setting a milit rate. We will review the milit rate options and the breakdown of the digest. We will review anticipated revenues. We will discuss ways property owners can reduce their tax liability and how to calculate a tax bill. And lastly, we'll go over the value of your tax dollar and how it corresponds to the budget discussion we had earlier this evening. The first definition we'll see is for a mil. A mil is equivalent to $1 per $1,000 of assessed property or .001 times the assessed value. A milit rate is the tax rate that is applied to the assessed value of property for taxing purposes. Next, we have the fair market value. This is the estimate of the market value of your property as determined by Fulton County. Please keep in mind that this may differ from MLS figures or other values you may find on the internet or through a private appraisal. If a property owner has concerns about their fair market value, they're, they have a right to appeal to Fulton County when the assessments are mailed typically around May through July annually. The assessed or taxable value is 40% of the fair market value we just went over. Exemptions are deducted from this figure, and that subtotal is multiplied by the milit rate in order to determine taxes due. We will go over this calculation in detail later in the presentation. The rollback rate is the rate that will bring the same amount of revenue on existing properties as last year's milit rate did. This is the estimated floating exemption as reported to the state varied from the, in this year, sorry, the estimated floating exemption as reported to the state varied from the final values in an amount that yielded a higher rollback rate than last year's milit rate. And again, we'll discuss this later in the presentation in more detail, but that was what was requiring us to only have this one meeting this year as opposed to the three in years past. The milit equivalent is the calculation used to determine the impact of reassessments on real property on the current year digest values. And again, in Milton's case this year, the calculated rollback rate was higher than the proposed milit rate of 4.731. So here we are tonight. We had the first presentation back on August 3rd, and tonight, we're having unfinished business where you will vote when, at the conclusion of this presentation. Before you, you have the required advertisement of the five, of the current and five-year history of levy. This calculation shows all the values according to the initial information provided by Fulton County's consolidation and evaluation of digest that is compared year-over-year. So this is not actuals after the appeals have been finalized and everything, it's the initial values sent over. When you compare initial values of 19 to initial values of 20, you'll see that year-over-year there's a neutral variance, 0%. The other advertisement that we use for the rollback rate has a different calculation. It zeroes in on the impact of reassessments to existing real property or inflation. You'll see that here in this column, reassessments of existing real property. You can see the floating exemption has had a large impact from what we originally anticipated to what the final reassessed values yielded. This is the math behind all the ads. I won't bore you with all the details, but I wanted to use it and have it here for transparency purposes for anyone to be able to follow through what we have to advertise. You get that 10.4% decrease. That is not saying that every property is going to experience a 10.4% decrease in taxes. That is saying that in order to maintain the typical amount on the existing real property, you would have to have a 5.259 milit rate, which again, city has a capped milit rate, so we cannot exceed 4.731 on the maintenance and operating side. Here is the math behind the five-year history and current digest ad that we talked about earlier, which was really yielding that 0.0% variance year-over-year. Again, that compares that 100% collections to initial values distributed by the county. So here we have before you our capped milit rate, which is equal to our current milit rate for FY 2020. And then you can see that rollback milit rate, which we cannot consider this evening because it's above our capped rate. I'd also like to show you that the separately calculated green space bond milit rate is being proposed at 0.538. That is a decrease from 0.588 last year, and that will yield enough funds to cover the debt service due in FY 2021. Here before you, you have the net MNO digest at $2,691,8413. At 100% collection rate, that would yield a levy of $12,731,161 at a 4.731 milit. Again, as we discussed earlier, the city uses a 95% collection rate for real property. This keeps us able to consider any of the possible variances due to appeals of property that we've not yet had any information on, and the impact that that floating exemption will have, in addition to any possible delinquencies. Our actual delinquencies are typically a lot lower than that, but this gives us the ability to ensure that we are adjusted for those appeals. At the personal property level, we have seen over historic values of closer to a 65% collection rate, and for motor vehicles, 50%. So those lines are exactly what you will see in the revenue lines for those particular items in the budget presentation we spoke about earlier this evening. And just for a point of reference, I have here the FY 20 real property amended budget at $11,948,008, and our total collections to date right under that at $11,937,561. I'd like to take a minute to explain to some of the property owners their opportunities for tax savings. for tax savings. We have several exemptions here at the city. The first being our basic homestead exemption, which you can apply for at the county. There's no age or income restrictions. Anyone who resides in the property is eligible for this exemption. It takes $15,000 off of that assessed value, the 40% value we talked about earlier. And the floating homestead exemption is the new CPI, Consumer Price Index exemption. I have a specific slide that explains that math, so I'm going to skip over that one for right now. But again, you can apply for that at the county. Once you apply at the county, it trickles down through the digest to the city. Our senior exemptions here, you have to apply for with the city. We have an age-based one at 65 and older for 15, an additional $15,000 on top of that basic homestead exemption. We have, if you're 65 and meet the income qualifications, you get $25,000 on top of that $15,000. And if you're 70 and meet the income qualifications, or if you have a disability certified by a doctor and meet the income qualifications, you have a full value exemption for the city of Milton on the maintenance and operating side. So again, our income-based exemptions only apply to the maintenance and operating side, or, sorry, our income-based exemptions apply to the, to both. The non-income-based exemptions do not apply to our bond. Clarify that one more time. The first ones do not apply to the bond. So again, this floating homestead exemption or the CPI exemption, as people may have heard it referred to, I have revised this slide to be a little clearer. The original slide had last year's data. I have spoken to the county and obtained our CPI value for FY 2021 or 2020 tax year, and you will see that the Consumer Price Index is 1.8%. This example is assuming that the entire property is eligible to be under the CPI exemption. So for, if it would happen to be five acres or less, not have any additional improvements, including a pool or any additions to the home. You would take last year's adjusted base value that we have highlighted in the yellow on the left-hand side, and that would become your new adjusted base year value. That value is then multiplied by the CPI inflation rate to give you your new adjusted base year value for 2020. You take your 40% of that, and let's say that the county came and reassessed your property, and the assessment went up from $460,000 to $500,000. You now do the difference in these two 40% values, and you can see here where your floating homestead exemption increases to account for that additional appraised value, yielding overall a 1.8% increase in your taxable value before any other exemptions. So I just wanted to show how that kind of works out. A lot of our residents have been calling, asking about it. They were very concerned when the first tax, the appraisals went out. So I'd like to say it's an exemption, it's not a value. So when you get your tax appraisal, it's still going to show the value of your home. You just want to make sure that that value is right, and your CPI exemption will cover you in the difference in the exemption. We also have our CUVA, which is our conservation use value assessment. This is when you have attractive land that you are maintaining in a conservation use that's been proven to the state of such, you can apply at the county. There's no minimum acreage, but if you have less than 10 acres, you have to submit additional paperwork to prove that bona fide conservation use. You're agreeing to maintain the property at that qualifying use for a period of 10 years, and that is a property value now based on your land use instead of your market value. And so you'll see that come straight to the city as your value decrease. It's not an exemption, it's actually a value decrease. So here, I'd like to talk about how you calculate your tax bill. Again, we removed the floating exemption because they are very unique and specific to individual properties, and I just based it on a fair market value of $400,000. It's kind of the average of our home value on last year's digest, and I included that $15,000 basic exemption. So you take your assessed value, which is the 40% of the $400,000. You remove your exemption, so if you do know your floating exemption, you can remove it right in that line. And then you take that subtotal and you multiply it out by our milit rate, and that would yield for a $400,000 home with the basic homestead exemption, a $686 maintenance and operating tax bill. So this is not including our bond milit. Here you have your value of your tax. I took this formula, I took all the requests we've had for FY 2021's budget, broke that down by percentages, and put that $686 across those different departments. And you can see here that daily, you're spending 77 cents in order to have your public safety, that's your fire and your police coverage, 2 cents on court, 19 cents on public works, 9 cents on your parks and recreation, 13 cents on community development, 30 cents on the rest of the general government body and administration, 29 cents on that PEGO program we spoke about, and about 10 cents on the revenue bond debt service due. So $1.89 a day for your city services at that 4.731 milit rate. So lastly, we have always our rationale for the 4.731 milit rate. This allows our city to continue funding the capital improvement projects as planned, so that way we can continue on the seven-year plan as proposed. It allows us to implement the master plans we've completed in a timely manner, so they're not just sitting there as ideas are actually being carried out. Some of the challenges we have with the capped milit rate, Milton has a very limited commercial tax base and a limited zone footprint, so our milit rate at the residential level is what is able to maintain those revenues. Assessed property values have not kept up with the market, and now, as I've showed you, the floating exemption is keeping those increases at bay even more. Our community's vision to retain rural character also reduces density increase opportunities. So the reserve, if we defer any kind of maintenance, a lot of times that'll end yielding in more costly long-term replacements we've talked about. If we forego paving or filling potholes, we may have to do a full-depth reclamation, which is much more expensive in the long run. So here we have kind of our budgeting philosophy. We always have our current operations have to be considered first. That's always our first priority. Once we have allocated funding towards those current operations and maintaining any service levels we've given to the citizens, we then consider any new initiatives or increased service levels. And below, I have an example of that. If we're talking about repaving roads as scheduled according to, say, our five-year plan, that's our current operations. An enhanced level of service would be repaving a road that maybe someone has seen that needs addressing, that wasn't in the current five-year plan. And then a new initiative would be something like constructing a new road in order to ease congestion, and I always use, like to use Heritage Walk as an example of that. So here we have our service level requests. We have some opportunities to increase service levels. We get a lot of citizen feedback, as well as the mayor and council do, requesting things like adequate maintenance to the newly acquired green spaces. They want them to look a certain way, maybe some more manicured mowing on certain areas of town, improved debris management, like we talked about, that pilot program for the street sweeper. That would be a service level increase we're looking at this year. The timely implementation of our city plans. And then we also talked about our capital contributions. We have capital contributions to the local schools that we share an IGA with. This keeps overall costs on buildings down, and we utilize those capital costs to offset the need for fields and basketball courts. Lastly, we talked about this a little bit earlier, that we utilize our 4.731 milit rate, helps us maintain and retain a highly talented workforce. As you know, vacancies in a small city like ours can delay a lot of projects, so those will help us maintain attractive salaries for our departments. That in a nutshell is our proposal for a 4.731 milit rate and a 0.538 bond milit rate.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Do we have any public comment on that?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'll close the hearing on that. And I'll open up for a motion for approval.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-213.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Jameson, a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Bernadette. All right, if the city clerk would please sound our next item.
Next item is consideration of an amended emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, under Section 3.18 of the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, to provide the operation of the city of Milton, Georgia during the public emergency known as the novel Corona Disease 2019 global pandemic, to become effective upon adoption by the council to supersede the existing emergency ordinance and for other purposes. Agenda item number 2218. Yes, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I'll be brief. The city council at this point has a lot of experience with this. We have been imposing an emergency ordinance pursuant to the city charter since literally March. We have, at this point, sort of evolved in our thinking. We are still running coterminous with the governor's declaration of emergency. As the council is likely aware, the governor has in fact extended the declaration of emergency through September 11th. Ours, our existing emergency ordinance expires on August 11th, so if the council was to adopt this emergency ordinance this evening, it will become effective on August 12th and then run for September 11th. We have to have them run on 30-day tracks pursuant to the charter. The reopening plan was implemented by way of a previous ordinance, so that's already in place. And candidly, some of the emergency enactments that you all have done, all of them candidly have been mitigated, the impacts on business. We have slowly sort of weaned off of those. We still have a few in place, but the reality is, we are continuing to impose this, A, because we are still obviously in this health emergency as manifested by the governor's order. Two, we want to continue some of those protections with respect to our businesses. And number three, we want to make sure that we are entitled to the full funding of any emergency-based funding that may come from the state or federal government, and so it's better to have your emergency declaration in place. Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation. And again, if the council does in fact adopt this this evening, it will become effective on August 12th and run till 11:59 PM on September 10th, unless, of course, we extend it further.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Not all open for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 20-218.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Morag. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Ken. We can move on to new business, and if our clerk will please call this item.
The item is consideration of a resolution appointing the chair and ex officio officers to the comprehension Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, known as CPAC, for the city of Milton 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Agenda item number 2219. Mr. Parag Agrawal.
Mayor, the city council members, we have a resolution in front of you that will basically name the chairperson of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, and it will also name the two city council members as the ex officio members of the CPAC. As you know, we are launching the comprehensive planning process, and the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee will basically guide the comprehensive planning process.
So our chair, basically, we discussed this, was, which, this is the formal action on the chair.
Yes, this is a formal action.
And was the planning commission chair and whatnot, so Mr. Ron Gilbert.
Ron Gilbert, yeah.
And then we also discussed having two appointees from city council to sit in, which I had recommended, Paul, and then.
I recommended Laura.
Okay, and then Carol had stepped up and recommended Laura. So, or I think you guys have had some discussions.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, all right, so I'll open up for a, for a motion on this and some names.
Those names?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Do we appoint Ron Gilbert as chairman of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee and the ex, the two council ex officio members as Paul Moore and Laura Bentley.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second as read. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Parag. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All right, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.